Okay, it's reported.
Thank you.
Okay, at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call in. Number six, Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order. For those of you concerned, we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Well, thanks everyone for coming. Our first order of business is public comment. Do you have any public comment? Give your name and address.
So I'm Kirk Casher, 50 South Edward Road. Um, and I'm no longer in, in middle school, but I'm here to talk about middle school sports again. I heard that uh, we're, we're not doing soccer for next year, so I would like to reconsider that thought. So I played on the middle school basketball team and I had a good experience. I had such a good experience. Um, I wish I could have had the same experience with middle soccer. It gave me something to look forward to every day after school and created bonds between me and my coaches and teammates. Playing middle school sports was a whole different than a town and travel leagues. It allowed me to create bonds with the teachers and represent my school in a way that we can't in travel in town programs. My peers come and support me at games instead of just my parents, like any other league or game. And uh, I just.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Um, I'm Nyla Caser. I live at 50 South Edward Road in Niantic. At the middle school orientation and at the freshman orientation this year, I listened to administrators in this town, our superintendent, our athletic director, talk about the importance of sports and all that we have to offer in Eastline. On the Eastline website, I quote, "It is our mission to provide an opportunity for all students to participate and grow physically, socially, emotionally, through participation in competitive interscholastic athletics." It goes on to say that they believe that participation in athletics enhances the development of positive student attitudes and habits, provides lifelong lessons through sportsmanship, teamwork, camaraderie, adversity, competition, and winning and losing gracefully. It teaches responsibility. It improves one self-concept. It develops leadership skills and it builds character. If we truly believe in all of these statements that are on our website, then why do I find myself here, standing before you yet again, begging you to consider putting middle school soccer and other sports into the budget? I was told by our athletic director in an email just this past week that after speaking with central office staff, as well as Eastline Middle School Administration, he will not be putting forth a request to include any other middle school sports offerings in the budget plan for next year. The athletic director also went on to tell me that our town offers such a robust, and those are his words, robust town soccer program, and parents are willing to pay for such premier travel teams, that it outweighs the need for any middle school team. Parents should not have to pay thousands of dollars to have their children play on competitive soccer teams, not when we live in a town like Eastline, or Killingley, or Waterford, or any other town for that matter. Parents should not have to drive to Bramford two to three times a week and all over the state on weekends to play on competitive teams. Because we are an affluent town and some parents can afford the travel teams, we shouldn't offer middle school sports to all students. So only the ones who can afford it can reap the benefits of sports and all the positives that come out of playing sports that I just shared with you and that are on our website. Our team at the high school level is what it is because parents have been willing to pay for travel and the youth program. Parents are willing to pay for these premier teams and travel all over across the state. Because our town doesn't provide competitive competition enough. Otherwise, why would they be doing it? Shouldn't we be offering and building the program based on our middle school program? Ask any fifth grader who did run cross-country this year, what their favorite part of the program was. Many, if not all of them, are gonna say it was the bus rides. They had opportunities to build bonds with their teammates and friends on the bus. Give them an opportunity to do that in more than just cross-country. There is only cross-country and swimming offered to all middle school students. Basketball, which is the only team sport, is not offered to fifth grade boys. There's cross-country and there's swimming. That is it. Put middle sock, put middle school soccer, or volleyball, or any other program into the budget. Make it aware at a reasonable time and see if it's needed. If it's not needed, then you have extra money in your budget. We need to do better. We need to do the right thing. And I'm asking you again, do the right thing for all students, not just the ones who can afford it.
Brendan Asso, I'm a varsity player and a captain of the soccer team right now. I'm a senior at Eastline High School. And I was.
Can I get your address, please?
Yeah, 61 Prospect Avenue. And I was just informed about this last night about how middle school sports like weren't being represented enough in the school, and how it's pretty limited among like just cross-country and maybe basketball in and out, which is something I did in middle school. And um, I think that it's very important to have like a soccer program in there as well, just because of the amount of cooperation the kids can get and also the time with the ball that the kids can get as well. Uh, I was in middle school basketball for my sixth and seventh grade, and it was taken out because of budget or whatever. They never told us, but I wasn't able to do it in eighth grade. But sixth and seventh, I had the best experience and you could tell all the kids that played JV and varsity for their next years in high school, they were on those teams. And it was just like so important that the whole school came together and they were able to represent like what Eastline has to offer. And I just think that expanding our programs and providing not just soccer, but like other sports, if the kids are asking for it, they should be able to play and it gives them stuff to do and stuff to participate in. I just think sports are a great thing and we should keep it going.
Hello, my name is Ashton, 50 South Edward Road in Niantic, and I think we should have middle school soccer. Because uh, you get the uh, I think we should have middle school soccer because you get to spend time with your friends. I would have chose it instead of cross-country because I like soccer more. And I wish we had soccer. You have an old prime habit and we don't, and I don't think that's fair. Also, you get to take a bus with your team instead of having your parent drive you. And after school, you have to hang out with your friends and play sports instead of uh, coming and waiting for a parent to drive you. Also, your birthday won't matter because, because so some of my friends are born in 2012 and two, and I was born in 2013. And they're older than 2,000 people who were born in 2012. And I won't be able to play with them, but in middle school soccer, you'll be able to play with them.
Hi, Kirk Casher, 50 South Edward Road, Niantic. We are interested in having middle school sports. We keep hearing how important sports are to keep us connected. And I don't think we've done enough for our middle school programs to keep them going. Um, a lot of what I've said here, that was what a lot of both people have said. Um, probably should have checked notes earlier. Um, but there's this perception that we tried to run middle school soccer a few years ago and that it failed and that that keeps coming around. So let me just address some of those issues because I think those are the biggest issues. Um, so backtracking a few years ago, we came to a board meeting in June and asked for middle school soccer and basketball. During COVID, money was pretty much free. We had a lot of money to be spent. Uh, come around during the summer, I spent many hours with the former principal at the middle school and trying to get middle school soccer going. On September 9th, uh, middle school sports was finally announced that we would actually run it. Um, at the time, September 9th, uh, tryouts from, keep in mind, tryouts for town or premier leagues had been done in May, and cross-country had already started. As a matter of fact, my oldest son was on the cross-country team and happened the next day. Because while he liked him as cross-country to be with his teams, he really didn't like running. You know, he wanted something with a ball, so he quit and he joined the soccer team. Uh, because the late decision, they were also not in a league. We hadn't joined a league, so we're trying to find some soccer games and put a squad together. Later, it was announced that practices would be from three to four on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That turned other people off as well, because it just seemed like not much of a league if you're only gonna practice three to four on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and you don't actually have a league to play in. Additionally, the school only allowed seventh and eighth graders to sign up for soccer. So you got a fifth through eighth grade school, you're asking seventh and eighth graders to sign up. Still, through all of this, the late sign up, um, the fact that it was only seventh and eighth graders, we got 17 boys to sign up. Sadly, we only got six girls. They decided to go co-ed. At that point, things kind of fell apart. Some of the boys didn't want to play with girls. They're afraid they're gonna hurt them. Um, there's a certain kid on the soccer team right now, if he kicked a ball, he would hurt any one of us. Um, he decided not to play, um, just for the safety of, of those other girls, and we went with a co-ed program. Um, and late October of that season, players were asked if they wanted to play a game against Salem. At that point, they had six or eight practices. They were kind of like, it was just kind of a time to bond together and they were kind of liking that, but they weren't really sure they were ready for a game. The whole playing with boys and girls was just kind of unique and different to them, and they weren't really sure they wanted to play the game. Um, they decided they didn't want to play and that instead of getting a bus for that game, they would play against the faculty the next week. So the coach got a bunch of faculty members, they came outside, they had a great time. My point being that if you hear that soccer was a failure, I would tell you it wasn't. And we had 17 boys sign up after September 9th. Um, when they, a lot of people already committed to other seasons to premiere, to town, to cross-country. Um, I, I would say it was a success that we had those 17 boys. Did we have some trouble getting the girls on the team? We did at that time. I wish we would have opened up to five through eight, and I wish we would have advertised it in May. So as you think about this sign up, as you hear the, the thing that it didn't run well the first time, I would disagree. I would say it was actually very successful. Um, I would say if we can advertise it by May, I think it'll run well. And here's the deal, if it doesn't, then we don't have to run it. And we have the, we can save, save the town the money that we want to save. But I would like to see us run it for girls. I think we could also run girls volleyball. I know the girls freshman team is, they have a full team here. And there's a league for middle school girls volleyball that has, has some teams in the fall, and a old line plays in it. I think those are opportunities for kids, the more we can get them, the better. So I would like this board to certainly consider putting in the budget for next year. At least boys and girls soccer, or boys and boy soccer and girls volleyball. I think those two things add a couple of offerings to our students that I think will serve them very well. Um, and we do know that, you know, team sports really unify a school more so than any of the individual sports. And right now, we, we don't, the only team sport we have is basketball, and I think soccer and volleyball, those sports would help. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Another public comment? The other public comment? Last chance for a comment. Okay, thanks for close public comment. Thanks for, um, thanks for reaching out. Okay, the next part of the agenda, we have some minutes to approve from the October 30th regular meeting. Any thoughts or comments? Any changes, all those, and I'm looking at you Laura too, so hold the favor, say aye. Host. Thank, Laura, thumbs up if you were to approve. Okay, thank you. And minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to, we have a special recognition. We have a middle school Viking valor.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn over to Claudia to share a few words and then we'll.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, I just want to say it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Kristen Amaral, who is Eastline Middle School's Viking Valor recipient. Um, Kristen, as a math coach at Eastline Middle School, has demonstrated exceptional dedication and effectiveness in supporting both staff and students. She continually goes above and beyond typical application. Kristen facilitates well-structured coaching cycles, provides invaluable guidance for faculty, as well as offers continuous feedback and suggestions to improve classroom instruction. Kristen has also been instrumental with her commitment to professional development and supporting the explicit instruction modules. Kristen has generously shared and enhanced teaching methodologies with not only the math department, but all content area teachers. Kristen has displayed outstanding leadership in helping to secure a grant, which will utilize tutors to support tiered instruction in the areas of math that we've heard about. This initiative will have a profound impact on personalizing learning and ensuring that our students receive tailored support based upon their individual needs. The capacity of our math coach to identify and address specific challenges faced by both her teachers and staff is yet another example of Kristen's dedication to Elms. Kristen never fails to jump and insist in whatever capacity is needed. These examples include, as you recollect from last June, presenting at a Board of Education meeting on data, participation in a variety of committees and off-site visits interfacing with colleagues, both at the elementary and high school levels, as well as helping facilitate and host at the end of the year. She's a great MC and I think she can move in as a talk show host as well. The extraordinary efforts of Kristen evaluating the math department, as well as the culture and the climate at Eastline Middle School, are just a few examples of her commitment, dedication, and proactive involvement. I personally want to thank you for all that you do at Elms. I am both honored and proud to recognize you as our nominee for the support. Congratulations.
Kristen has a friend who, uh, she brought along. Want to introduce your daughter, Kristen?
I will say, thank you so much for letting me bring Sienna. My husband is traveling tonight and so this is a hope to bring her, so thank you.
Happy to have.
Thank you, thank you.
Because there's a lot of folks that go above and beyond this district and, uh, you know, Kristen really emulates, um, all of that. Um, and it was even above that. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
I want to present you with this award.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to get a little picture.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, perfect.
Want to take a picture?
All right. Thank you. Maybe they'll forget. There we go. All right, good. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we'll move on to special reports. Uh, we do not have high school student representatives, but today we do have our middle school school representatives. We have Sophia and Sabia. Welcome, thanks, hi.
Sophia, um, so Taste of the Arts was October 25th. It was an open house for families, and it gave a chance for families to meet the life arts teachers. Um, it's kind of like a meet and greet. Um, preparation for student-led conferences is taking place. A half-day on November 20th and a full day off on November 21st is for conferences. And conferences is a chance for students to share what they've been doing at school with their parents or guardians. Uh, students prepare for fully open class that include important projects and activities they've done so far in the school year. Veterans Day is Friday, November 10th, and Elms will honor the service of our veterans. We'll have discussion panels, a veterans luncheon, and a whole school assembly. Our service club will expand on this later. Um, PTA spiritware and fundraisers are taking place. The school is working with PTA to put together Spirit Day and fundraiser fundraisers this year. The PTA has worked with admin to run PTA dances, and PTA also works with student leaders. The book fair has happened for the first time in a couple of years. Um, this was made possible by the PTA and it was open the whole week of October 23rd. We have a book fair in class.
My name is Sadie. Sorry if my voice sounds funny. I have a cold. Um, but to start mine off, we have cross-country. The boys, um, they, their record was five wins and one loss. The girls' record was three wins, three losses. Um, the local championship, championship results were, um, included by 10 local schools. And the boys' team finished second overall and the girls' team was fourth overall. Um, the individual medals, um, were at the local championship. Individual place, one, sorry. The roster for the, um, fifth grade runners was 21. The sixth graders had 18 runners, the seventh grade had 17 runners, and the eighth grade have 22 runners. The championship was ran on November 4th. Then we had back-to-school night. This was the first year that we've done back-to-school night in all in one night. We used to have it in two nights, the fifth and sixth grade being in one night, and then the seventh and eighth being another. There was a small break between the fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grade, um, back-to-school night. To, to space out parking and exiting, it made families with children in different grades easier since it was all in one night instead of different nights. And the parents were given a chance to meet the staff, go through team expectations, and review the lunch menu. We, this year, we have made a new change into our schedule. It's called Learning Lab. Learning Lab gives students what they need to strengthen in a subject. Um, Learning Lab is individualized to meet the kids' needs of what they need to work on. It is not just a study hall. It is focused on one thing every day. There is interscholastic basketball coming up. The tryouts will be on November 9th, 10th, and 13th and 16th for the boys. And for the girls, it will be November 14th and 16th. Um, all dates will be from around 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Both girls and boys basketballs will have new uniforms this year, and for, for the girls' basketball, the fifth graders will be trying out this year, but they will only play on JV. The last, the last part is internet safety presentation. We had a school assembly one day on, sorry. Two, there was two separate presentations. There was seventh and eighth earlier in the morning, and then grades five and six afterwards. Um, it geared the fifth and sixth grade differently, and the seventh and eighth grade was also different. There was Scott Driscoll who, um, led the presentation. He was a retired law enforcement officer and shared tips and tricks about safety features, and we ended with any questions students wanted to ask.
Thanks, Sadie. Thanks, Sophie. Any questions? Yeah.
How did you find the presentation by Scott Driscoll?
I think I found it very fascinating. Like, it also helped me with, um, things that I didn't know before. Um, for example, like, I don't have Snapchat, but he mentioned in Snapchat you can turn off locations like, so you can turn on your location for specific people, or you can turn it off, so it's more safe for you.
I liked that he started at the presentation with saying, "I'm not trying to tell you to do something. I'm giving you the information to make your own choices." And I thought that was a really great approach. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You can go or you can stay.
Thanks so much. Good night.
Thank you.
And, uh, we do have a selectmen's representative today, so we have the answer.
It's in Torrey here, yeah. Just a couple of items. Look, you have a busy agenda here. Um, the most recent, um, item that Board of Selectmen has been working on is moving the ordinance to a public hearing that concerns, uh, Youth, Family, and Human Services Commission. So establishing that, as you know, we have a new, uh, services commission. Uh, our attorneys have, uh, told us that there are, there are particular issues. Right, Jamie, you know about the issues with that, with that, um, existing, uh, ordinance, so we are updating it. And all of this is to dovetail into the establishment of, um, a human services department. So, um, to help the funding with that department, we need to establish that commission correctly by state statute. So it's all working in tandem. The public hearing is, um, November 15th at 7:00 PM at Eastline Town Hall. So you're welcome to attend that for more information. Um, I was very pleased that the, the budget numbers for 2425 for this, for, for the department, um, stayed around $180,000. So, and would you expect rent money to come in? So that was very encouraging to me. We had a great presentation ahead of this redoing of the ordinance, uh, um, by Sarah Furman, uh, from Youth Services, and, uh, others, um, who spoke, you know, very passionately about the need for a human services department and, and commission for youth up through the senior years. And Eastline unbelievably is one of the few towns in our, um, in our county that, um, New London County that does not have, um, this going on. We have bits and pieces of services, as you well know, so the, the basic concept is to try to, um, really, uh, put this together in one place, so we don't have it services and here and there and everywhere else, and at the senior center and so forth. So that was one, one, I think, very positive initiative, um, that, you know, we've worked together well on, uh, with other boards. Um, Veterans Day, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear about the Friday events with the students. And then the town's events are this Saturday, just basically it's a ceremony at Liberty Green at 10:00 AM. So it's, um, you're welcome, you know, to attend that. Uh, basically, uh, for those not familiar with it, the, the ceremony recognizes the service of our veterans. Um, you know, um, it's, it's different than a Memorial Day service, but very, very, um, very, very pleasant, um, event. Um, lastly, uh, tomorrow's, you know, Election Day. Um, so, um, just want to point out about, um, the charter revisions. Um, I think most families received at their household, the card with a little QR code at the bottom to, um, give you a little information about the 11 questions that you'll be answering on the backside of your usual ballot. So, um, please take a look. Um, I cannot comment on, um, the pros and cons of those, obviously. Um, uh, but definitely there's plenty of information online. The questions, you know, came to you, but the actual explanatory text, which, which we are required to provide, um, by state law, um, is given to you online. So definitely visit the online information for, you know, for more information. But that's it for me.
Questions for Ann? Just one minor comment on that. I guess, I don't know if concern is the right word, but it's, I think voting is gonna take longer. I'm a little worried about the lines, I guess, that it could start falling because it could take a few minutes.
Yeah, I can give you one tip that's unrelated to your yeses and your noes, yays and nays. But, um, take the card with you. I mean, if you, if you, you know, if you're not a yes or a no or whatever, take that card with you as a reference, because it'll just, it'll speed things up a little, then you'll be, you know, be able to know what your answers are, so to speak, ahead of time.
Yeah, even just reading.
Yes, just reading.
Takes a while, yeah, yeah.
11 questions, yes. What you've got, you know, the rest of the ballot on the other side.
Thanks so much, Ann. Okay, so that, um, there are special reports. We have no consent agenda, and we move on to discussion, action, instruction. And we have our Eastline Middle School Principal Report.
Absolutely. Hi again. So I just want to say, um, I'm very proud to have some of our middle school students that are here. They're club advisors. Um, and also thank you to our parents for being here and always supporting the students, as well as the staff throughout the year and everything that your children do. So thank you for being here tonight and participating. Um, we're gonna have our first group of students. We thought it would be good to hear from you, from their students directly. Um, this, our group is gonna be the service club and their advisor is Mr. Mario Cruz. Um, so the kids are gonna stand up from the service club. They're gonna introduce themselves and share a little bit from their perspective of what they do to help enhance. All right, I think you, you're first, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Morgan Riley and I am in the seventh grade. We want to thank you on behalf of the Eastline Service Club, the rest of the student body, faculty, and staff for giving us the opportunity to talk to you. The service club is dedicated to identifying and supporting different agencies, organizations, and individuals. We begin the school year planning how we want to help our community.
My name is Swan Connor and I'm in the sixth grade. Over the past years, the service club has sponsored activities to help our local food and care, regional homeless shelters, the Ronald McDonald House, and mail the care packages to men and women in active duty.
My name is Lucy Plusa and I'm in the seventh grade. Another one of our yearly events is honoring Veterans Day. Eastline Mills School has been celebrating Veterans Day for over a decade. Each year, we invite retired and active service men and women from our community to be honored at our school.
My name is May Casey and I am in the sixth grade. In addition, we invite veterans and military service members from surrounding towns to join us for this special occasion. It has been the tradition in our school district to honor and remember our veterans. We think it is important for. We think it is important for students and staff to honor the commitment, service and tradition of our nation's history.
Hi, my name is Zoe Ballas and I'm in the seventh grade. The day is filled with many activities throughout the school. The mornings begin with our guests participating in panel discussions within the classrooms. Our guests share their military experience, discuss their service and answer questions from our students. Afterwards, a very nice luncheon is provided for our guests to enjoy. In the afternoon, we conduct a school-wide ceremony complete with speeches and musical performances from our student body.
My name is Nora Zara and I'm in the seventh grade. This year, our Veterans Day celebration will take place on Friday, November tenth from ten hundred to fourteen hundred hours at the middle school. Please consider spreading the word or joining us for this during our school assembly. This important celebration has been enjoyed by our community for many years. We thank you for your time and having us here this evening.
The other thing that I want to add to that is um these members of the Service Club that are here, in addition to other members, will also be kind of personal hugs to the veterans that come in. So they'll greet them at the door, bring them down um in the morning for a beverage and pastry and then help escort them to the levels of teams that they'll be talking to. Um, so they'll be having very personalized um um one-on-one attention with the Service Club. All right, did you want to add anything else or did you want to speak?
Say that. We had twenty five students in the Service Club, so this is just a small reminder.
And as of right now, when I spoke with some of the um building-based community members, we have pre-registered fifty five veterans who are committed to be with us on Friday. And I had heard that there were thirteen additional cadets that are hoping to be able to join us, so they're gonna touch base with Mrs. McMillan on Wednesday. So um if you're available, we'd love to have you in the building and have you join us for the day. It's one of my favorite days and events of the year, so I'm hoping that you all. Students, you are free to go. If you would like, I appreciate you being here and thank you for representing each of our middle schools so well. We also have another group that's here tonight um that I think would, you would like to hear from. This is our student leader. So these are some of uh just a sampling of our student voice of representation of leadership capacity. Our club advisors are Miss Molly Berry and this is Megan Chicaro. So if the students want to stand up and just introduce yourselves and if you could share out, that would be greatly appreciated.
Hello, my name is Madeline.
I'm Natalie.
I'm here.
And we are here from the Leaders Club at Eastline Middle School. So what is Leaders Club? Well, Leaders Club consists of twenty seven of our seventh and eighth graders who have been nominated by our teachers. These students have shown leadership by respecting the environment, others and themselves. These students have shown great responsibility and reliability. The club helps promote school-wide activities as well as spreading awareness about upcoming events in our community and help support others.
We have done a lot to help our community last year and plan to continue helping this year. For example, last year we helped coordinate spirit days like Decade Spreading and the Jam Day. We also did a food drive, a competition. Lastly, we also helped with the work rate towards Invisiv Elementary School. This year, we have promoted Unity Day on October eighteenth for National Anti-Bullying. We promoted Unity Day by encouraging students toward orange books. Unity Day is a day to spread kindness, acceptance and inclusion for our community to prevent bullying. We encourage everyone to think about con- actions they could do for others, to include those who are feeling left out and to accept people's differences.
The Leaders Club also has many goals for this year. Some of these goals are to continue to collaborate with the P T A by supporting spirit days, school dances, different causes and community events. We also plan to work with the High School Rotary Club on the food drive. And another goal we have is to fundraise for the seventh and eighth grade quasi-trip. Uh, we will also continue to s- support our incoming fifth graders on their transition to the middle school. And in addition, we're also looking to plan a tournament, like a volleyball tournament or basketball tournament for all students to participate in that can support some type of cause.
Board, have any questions?
Just a quick one. I'm sorry if I missed this. How often does Leaders Club meet?
Uh, we meet two uh every other week on Tuesday morning.
Before school?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. You all did a great job. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like that.
I think what's nice is having the voice of students. We can stand here at the podium. We can share. We can give you the conversation. But it's so much more meaningful to hear it from the voice of the kids and you see their passion, you see their enthusiasm, you see their dedication. Um, students come in at seven thirty in the morning, they meet and um you know, they they really are the face. They are interactive. They advocate. So if there are things that uh they want to bring forth, they will set up an appointment and come in and talk with us. So um we're very fortunate as well as for our club advisors that are very dedicated and um are great assets in the building. So thank you for your support for for both of those clubs and organizations. Um, some other reports that I can share out with you is with regards to kind of what we are looking for to try to be able to focus on pathways. I had a meeting um maybe about two weeks ago with one of our teachers that had wanted to come to propose running the possibility of a new club. Specifically um looking at a guitar club, adding it to part of our club offerings. We had a couple that did not run for a variety of different reasons, whether it was a lack of participation, there wasn't an advisor to run it. So um Mister Sprankland had come in, talked about it and um really incorporating um all aspects of STEAM and trying to be able to really kind of have a smaller grouping of students going through um utilizing some of the tools in the tech ad area, building um instrument. The hope is eventually adding to be able to give them the skills to maybe look at repairing some of the instruments that we do have in the building and have them be more interactive and hands-on. Um, I, it, for some of you who have been able to be at the Board of Ed, um this kickoff at convocation. Mister Sprankland is one of our musicians, our building-based musicians, and he's very passionate about the guitar. And he is beyond excited to start this and he, I just chatted with him um yesterday, Friday, it was Friday. And he's, he can't wait to start. So probably will be smaller in number, but more, more offerings in terms of the duration of time that they meet. So that'll be a great addition um, you know, to the focus of the Board of Ed goals as well as our building-based goals. Um, we also had on October nineteenth um our Technology Fair. And that was really, we talked a little bit about that last time I was here. Um, but that was for eighth grade students in terms of giving them different exposures um to some of the opportunities for grade eight offerings. We have representation from Brasso Tech, Norwich Tech, Legerd, um Agicultural School, Marine Science Magnet, um Eastlime High School. Um, we had representation from our Pathways Program and New London Multi-Magnet. Um, the way that it was set up in the past, it was done in really kind of a um auditory in the um, sorry, in the cafeteria in a presentation room over two days where we would have um some of the speakers present, stand and present. Um, this year, we formed it, formed it. Um, the counselors took responsibility and set it up and it was almost set up as if it was a college fair and the feedback. Um, when I was interacting with the students during it was that it was much more hands-on. They really asked specific questions. They were able to go to the tables of the people that were represented there and have those specific answered questions answered. Um, the recipients, um the presenters also found it to be much more effective and really generated some good conversations. So um I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue in that model going forward. Um, so that was exciting. Um, as you heard from our students, we've had a number of um both student days. Um, we've done a lot this year with really trying to enhance and focus um um focusing on our culture and climate for our staff. We had on um Halloween Twin Day, so it was for staff to dress um with a colleague or a group. Um, and we also had some superlatives. So it made it for a fun day, um some very inventive and creative. And um I can certainly, Eric, if you'd like, send you the link. I did share it with both.
Already shared it?
You did.
I did. Forgot to tell you that I I shared it out.
Mister Cordier was rocking the Ken look, I have to tell you. It was a fun day. It was nice. Um, there was a large present amount of staff that did participate and I think it gave the kids an opportunity to see us really kind of come together. Um, there's also a su- superlative board um that staff nominated each other for different um kind of areas. So it's made it fun. Um, we continue to have, you heard about our internet safety presentation. Um, we've done a lot of work with the D E I. We did have middle school representation. We had two students that participated in October um at the Martin Luther King Scholarship Trust Fund. Um, so that was really nice. It gave them an opportunity to be able to see in their junior year of high school what opportunities might exist for them um and to kind of really get their minds and setting the stage for um go- going forward in the high school years. Um, it was an amazing event, um and just some amazing students and stories that we heard. So I was really fortunate and lucky to be a part of that and um I think if we can get one of our students from Eastline High School up on that stage going forward and if we can play off the seat. That would be, that would be awesome. Um, we're also collaborating with Linda Darcy from Learn, so we have some dates that we've set up. Um, where we'll have some of our building-based D E I members participating with her facilitation at Learn. We have dates set up in January, February, March and April, so that will be a great um resource to continue to add and to enhance what we're doing in our building. Um, another good thing that is coming up is Doctor Aram DeKoven is the Chief Diversity Officer at the Coast Guard Academy. He will be coming as a civilian, not as an officer, um at our December thirteenth faculty meeting um to be able to share out his perspective and just some um, you know, different feedback to some of our staff with regards to different issues um and different uh statements that may be coming up in classrooms and how to address and how to handle it. So uh we're really looking forward to that. Um, our building-based rep, uh Sarah Zlinsky, um did a great job with helping to facilitate that. So um that should be really helpful and exciting. Um, the work of our students, both our student leaders, our service club, um the P T A has been great. Um, I, we couldn't have um, you know, better support with our P T A. Our membership has grown. They actually um won an award for the largest membership growth um earlier in the year, I want to say in September uh for um the the vast amount of increase that they've had. So um we had some teacher representation presenting in our October meeting, so that was really good. And we're trying to be able to rotate through the building of having different teachers uh be part of that meeting. Um, you know, in the evening when we meet. So um their their collaboration and their support has been phenomenal this year. Um, we have the blood drive happening. That's tomorrow at our school as well. Um, and as you heard, um, you know, from our student, uh Board of Ed reps, um student-led conferences are happening. So our teachers and our students are underway preparing for that as well. So um busy place, lots of really great things happening. Um, with regards to um our instructional practice, um a curriculum fellow summit was held um two weeks ago and that is our curriculum fellows uh that will be um chaired out. Um, they were, everybody was given uh a resource, a book on explicit instruction. Um, deep rich, a deep dive of dialogue of the book and kind of how to help facilitate some of our coaches, our district coach and our E L A, our math coach. Um, was um held with regards to um just, you know, having teacher input and having more participation and um having their level of comfort in terms of sharing out with regards to the model of explicit instruction. Um, we're also really excited. We're working hard. Um, as you are aware, um we were the recipient of the High Dosage Tutoring Grant through um Hey Tutors. So um Kristen has been working diligently um with Annalise and um the administration in terms of um finalizing and trying to be able to formulate groups and schedules to be able to ensure that we are able to um meet the needs of all of the students and um have a schedule that's put in place that is um not um free of interruption and the focus can be on um moving some of those scores and um supporting kids and and where they need to be. So that is happening. That will run from December through um through June. And then um with regards to social media, we continue to utilize Facebook um and Instagram and just sharing out some of the snapshots that we have um with regards to different events that are happening in the building. We also have this week, um our little ones from the elementary school have been coming in. They've been doing rehearsals. They will be holding their first and they're just so cute walking through the front door. Um, it's, you forget how little they are when when the middle schoolers all day. But they will be performing their first um concerts, so that will be happening this week. So Eastline Middle School is a really, really busy, busy place this week. So lots of really great things happening. Any questions?
I have no questions, just comments. I just enjoyed everything that you just went through and it really is a wonderful place to be.
It's an amazing place. It just is. You love going to work every day and the kids are phenomenal and our staff.
Highlighting everything.
Thank you.
I've got one question, one comment and then one question or build on. You know, I thought this was great hearing. So we actually had a full middle school day. It feels like already. But it was good because we get to learn more just holistically about about the middle schools. I thought this was really effective. So let's read that. One question, just, I know it's probably early, but the fifth grade schedule, which has changed. How, I mean, any early signs that it's going well or any, any early indications? Too early to say?
No, I mean, we have, you know, we, we're working through, as we expected, there may be some, you know, small things that we needed to focus on and re- readjust. And we are doing that. I would say overall, it's going splendidly. We did meet with the entire fifth grade team as we told them that we would to get their feedback, their take, they're living it, they're breathing in every day to see the things that are working well and the things that we need to look at and refine. Um, their schedule is a little bit different um with regards to kind of the Learning Lab piece. Um, you know, one of the things that we're trying to and we're working with um our tech and Stacy Muscarola with regards to attendance taking and how you put it in, you know, those are minor things that are internal through through the way Infinite Campus is structured. So we are working at trying to fine tune that and um just kind of clean that up a little bit. But I would say all in all, it's great. Um, you know, the um research, are they um assured um pilot that we're doing for both the math and um and the reading is going splendid as well. Um, our math, uh not our math coach, excuse me, our E L A coach has been, I'm really supporting our literacy teachers. Um, and the feedback has been really good. Um, there's a lot of collaboration, a lot of time. There's a lot of material. So I think this extra support and the time that's been allocated for them um has been phenomenal to get us to the point that we're at. But from what the staff is conveying, um they're in a good place. They feel good. They feel confident about it. And, you know, like anything, there's always ways to improve and make tweaks and that's kind of where we're at right now. But all in all, I would say I'm very pleased.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks.
Another question, but thank you. That was a fantastic update and there's so much engagement happening. Um, I loved the format. Um, and I think, you know, along with where Eric was was talking about that. The piece about the kids um going through the description and their involvement in the clubs really showcased those clubs so phenomenally. I thought that was, that was great. And um, I mean, if I was a kid in that school, I'd be signing up. It felt like a really good, you know, uh welcoming, I think, to uh uh something of interest to, you know, potentially think about and join. Um, and then uh just kudos to Kristen Emerald, just so.
I said it before, she's a rock star. We are so lucky and I I can't thank the board enough for, um, you know, and it took a while to get that math coach, but now that we have her, um, she has been a godsend.
Years or something.
It's okay. It was worth the way, Eric. It was worth the way.
I mean, I know the whole, um, you know, the the resume, so to speak, is is long and there are so many things that didn't get, that, you know, are in addition to all of that. But I'll just throw, throw one out. Um, that if it weren't for COVID, um she was really instrumental in helping uh develop a what would have been a new club as well and going through the process of um, you know, kind of describing the club and finding out what the budget piece is and engaging um the administration. So uh, you know, for so many aspects and I just wanted to include that one.
No, absolutely. And I don't know if you caught, she had one of her former students, um the young gentleman that came out, that was the high school soccer player. So that was one of her former students and kids will come into the building, you know, when they, when they do have finals and they're always wanting to go and visit. We're like, listen, we'd love to have you, but you can't. We're still in session. Um, but she, she connects with our adults, she connects with her students and she is well-loved and a valued faculty member within our building. So, thank you. She's been, she's been recognized.
Hey, the next topic, uh, discussion and action proposed Eastline Administrators Association contract for the July first, twenty twenty four. To the June thirty of twenty twenty seven. If you recall, we had executive session last meeting to go through it. And now there was just some fine tuning of the language that brings us to here. The comments concerning?
I would like to recommend approval of the opposed administrative association contract for July one, twenty twenty four. To June thirty, maybe seven as presented.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jeff and uh, the rest of the administrators. Uh, thank you.
Again, sorry. I just want to say I was under negotiation team. So I just, thank you very much.
No, we appreciate all you do. So we're, uh, yeah, that's very good. Okay, great. Um, and then moving on, we have the next discussion action item, finance facilities community. And um, we have the food service update and we have Chris and Ashley.
Just a quick um, piece to add. Um, if, we added it this morning. Uh, my apologies for that. I had the food services income statement. So if you didn't have a chance to look at this weekend, that's in there now as well. Um, just so you can see what we're at with the balance, um, which is still pretty high. Chris, I'll turn over you and Ashley and you can introduce, uh, Ashley, we talked.
Um, yeah, so we're gonna give you our beginning of the year update for this year. Um, we added a new team member, Asha Meek.
Hey, Ashley.
Ashley is actually a um, alumni of Eastline. Yeah, grew up here and uh, went off to UMass and then came back. To uh, help us out here. She started at the end of last year, kind of got her feet wet. Uh, saw what it was to do the end of the year stuff and then jumped right in when we started school this year and it's been great. Um, so we got a little. Yeah, there's a slide. If you shoot the next one. Uh, yep. So Ashley is a registered dietitian. So we've been uh, putting a lot of that to use uh, already. Um, she's gonna start doing some office hours. Um, doing some tastings with the kids and uh, working with some focus groups also, including our wellness po- uh, committee. Um, and helped develop that into a stronger committee. Um, as you know, as Jeff was saying, we, we did have a balance last year of money we needed to spend. Um, so we already started putting a lot of that to good use. We actually got uh, A E Ds for all the cafeterias. So now all cafeterias have at least one A E D in them. The fibrillators, the.
Okay, all right. I'm thinking.
And some of the cafeterias didn't have them. So um, we were allowed to purchase some of those. So we did that. Um, We were two new reach-in coolers for an IONIC Center school. Um, we undered lenders for all of the uh, all five schools. Um, and then we had to update a couple of our point-of-sale systems also, and then the heat lamps for the high school.
Those are like food warmers, right? The heat lamps.
Uh, the big heat lamps that hang down from the seat. Yeah. You want to take?
Yeah, been working on some fun, interactive days with the kids. Um, so pictured here, we have Halloween. We gave out some fun pencils. Um, and also we did a opening to football day. Um, so you can see one of our um, cafeteria staff, Robin over at IONIC Center. Um, we were able to get some merchandise from the, um, from some of the um, NFL teams donated from us. So the kids thought it was really cool to get. Um, so some autographed merchandise from them as well. Uh, we brought back crunch day, um, trying to work more with some local farms. So um, kids that bought um, lunch and that didn't have to purchase lunch. Everyone, um, we encouraged to grab an apple and then do a little countdown, um, and all crunch at the same time. See how loud we could make that crunch. And also kind of sneak in some extra fruits and vegetables to kids that way. Um, like I mentioned, we're trying to encourage more um, farm-to-table as much as possible. So on the right, you can see the purple potatoes we got from White Gate Farm this year. Um, some mixed reviews from the kids. They were like, why are my potatoes purple? What's in here? Um, and then every week we get a whole truck full of um, apples from Scott's that we um, dispersed to all the schools. You can also see down there, we've been getting some local squash. Um, and on the next slide, I believe you can see ways we've been incorporating the squash. Um, so these are, that was a far, fall harvest bowl. Uh, we used some local kale, sweet potatoes, apple, feta. Um, little bit of dressing on top, really good reviews, um, from everyone all around, as well as some spaghetti squash bowls. Um, so trying to encourage and bring a little more nutrient density to the cafeteria as kids will comply.
Yeah, so Wednesday we started at the high school. It's a, it's Bowl Wednesday. So we do a different.
I want that butter gut squash.
Go to the next one, um, highlighted, um, kind of the build your own, allowing the kids to have more say in what they want in their meal. So like Chris said, every Wednesday we've been doing different themes. Um, we set up in the high school, um, kind of so the kids can walk down and pick their protein. Their grain, the vegetables, um, toppings, dressings, et cetera. That all goes in there. Um, been getting really great reviews. Like I said, bussin', like some stories like I'm not very mean with. Best thing that's ever happened to the school. I'm like, okay. Um, so you had a noodle bowl. Um, we did a teriyaki, um, pineapple stir fry, build your own burrito bowls. We did Mediterranean bowls. Like I said, trying to switch it up weekly.
Are we allowed to come for lunch? I'm serious. Do we need to call you ahead of time or just show up?
Yeah, we're gonna, the cafe. Yeah, we're gonna be doing the. Yeah, we're doing the catwalks and we work with the culinary students. So.
Yeah, because we'll come. Definitely come. Thirty-five cents.
Um, and not just at the high school. Are we trying to change some, some things up or bringing it in at the other schools as well? Um, the middle school, we've done similar um, stir fries, burrito bowls, things like that. Um, as well as offering more variety at elementary schools. They often don't have as big as a, of a cafe or kitchen to work with. So um, doing the best you can to give them some other alternate in choices if they don't always like that hot meal. Um, so we've done things like chef salads, hummus meals. Um, nacho meals, uh, little like lunchables. Um, but again, encouraging more fruits and vegetables in different kinds of ways for the kids.
And they really took to it because, as you know, we always had the yogurt meal. Um, and there was the kids who ate that every day. Well, so we switched this out and we totally removed the yogurt meals and we were like hoping they wouldn't freak out and not come back. Um, but uh, they jumped right in and they really got excited about it. And by the end of the week, they were, uh, because we did it five days consecutive rows. So it was like.
Yogurt meal every day kid. Has not been happier this year.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Good testimony.
And then, yeah, that's pretty much it. Anybody has any questions?
Which I just think about this, that I was always under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that feeding fresh foods and vegetables to the students was more expensive. And all that, I'm gonna call it junk that they fed us, you know, twenty years ago. So how are we, you know, how are we doing it? Or I mean?
Well, we get a lot, we get a lot of our fresh produce from the government program that delivers fresh produce every week. And we get to pick from their list and it is a lot of this local. Um, but also just because we built such a strong program and we have A good base financially, we can go out and buy a lot of these type items. And the kids really, especially the high school and middle school kids, it's, we get the fresh stuff in and it just blows out. Yeah, and they eat it. They actually eat it. That's the.
Well, and most kids at that age now are well aware of what you should eat, shouldn't eat. I'm assuming, especially.
Yeah, um, similar to like the Viking Cafe and it's been great seeing you guys at back to school nights. Is there a demand for like food services at other types of events as well? I know for a while you were doing like sandwiches for sports teams.
Yeah, we did. We, we actually have gone back to doing all of our uh, sports events. We catered for the uh, football team for all their away games. Um, we did volleyball this year, which was new. We'd never done them before. Um, and then we also did soccer when they go far away. Most of their games are Close by, but when they went far away, we uh, we took care of their meals. And then we have a bunch lined up for the spring, like lacrosse and baseball and, and those type things.
Let's love it.
It's, I, as a parent, it was great. My kid would grab a sandwich and then come home and he'd be still hungry.
Always get topped off before they get on.
It was great. I think like five dollars for a dinner for the kids on the bus.
Actually, I charged him the same when we charged for lunch. It was seventy-five for the high school students and. Yeah, and we're, and we're catering the veterinary day events uh, coming up on Friday and we've got a lot of other, like smaller in-school ones for P T A and that kind of stuff.
Tomorrow for some P D, Ashley. Let's just talk about what you're providing.
And then, actually, actually he's got some things going on with the staff tomorrow.
Oh, yes. Um, P D day tomorrow. I was like, tomorrow's not Wednesday. I was thinking my, my bowl day. Um, tomorrow at um, the P D day. I'll be, I'll be doing a thirty-minute presentation on um, optimal nutrition, um, feeding optimally for the workplace. Um, and to serve the students and um, whatnot, as well as a little bit on like superfoods. Obviously thirty minutes is only a small amount of time to kind of tap into the big, big realm of nutrition. Um, but kind of kicking that off and then offering yoga for teachers after to kind of end their day, um, and get a nice release that way.
What time is this?
No room in the class.
Two to three. Nutrition will be two to um, two thirty and then the yoga is two thirty to three.
So like we can't come, we're not invited?
There's a room in the class.
Oil is the border bed. Come on.
Y'all is gonna be living at this school. Lunch to lunch, yogurt classes.
I have a quick question. Food, but it's food related. Are you composting? How is that going?
Um, we still don't have a composting facility in the state of Connecticut that takes it. That's the biggest.
And you can't gear up with a garden across the street?
I don't think they could keep up with our volume.
That's a good point. That's a good.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's the main. And I know they just passed some new legislations and they actually put it on the map. You had to be within the certain circle Of how far you were from the plants and how much they could actually take from you. And then you have to have a coordinator at the buildings who Obviously takes care of all of the, making sure the kids are properly separating and everything's getting put in the proper Areas for the compost. So it mostly it's just Connecticut really hasn't got into having the facilities to take it. That's our, the main roadblock right now.
Minor partnership though with uh, giving garden or no?
No, no. No, and the, the health department's very.
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, they're not very, they, they want to see like, they don't want the local farmer picking, you know, in sometimes. And they want, they want to see a concrete plan of how, how you're doing it, if you're doing it.
You can't give it back to the local farmers.
Well, no, it's just, it's just like, what, what are you storing the, the separated items in? What are, you know?
Compost, put it in a platform. Well, no, I'm just saying.
You gotta make sure it's not somewhere where we have like. Does it, you know, it does attract critters, you know, outside. And so you gotta make sure you have all those proper.
The greenhouse too, just.
Yeah, in the greenhouse, um, we're gonna be doing a grand opening in mid-December. So.
Remember too, yeah, the existing one that was partially structured, we took that down and.
It's being repurposed into beds for the garden.
Yep.
And then uh, we also ordered the brand-new one that'll be delivered um, sometime in beginning of December. And we're gonna do a uh, Grand opening. Rimming cutting, yep. We're on our way. Patient didn't drop as much as I thought it was going to. So um, our numbers have been very strong.
Ashley changed.
And the kids still do get free breakfast. So it's.
Giving for free breakfast. What's the, what are the meals? I mean?
They have to have whole grain, fruit and milk with every breakfast. And then you're allowed. Now we, elementaries, we mix in breakfast sandwiches every once in a while. High school, they have them every day.
So I can stop by and pick up my breakfast.
And we're actually expanding the high school breakfast as well. We're gonna, had to move it to a bigger area and have, offering more things just because There are more of the, more of those kids in one building. So.
It's so great for working parents. I have one other question. How are you handling children with uh, gluten intolerance?
Um, we kind of do it case-by-case basis just because they're all different, like some, it's an allergen, some it's celiac. You know, so we, every food allergy is a case-by-case and we try to get as close to the menu we got.
Deliniating between celiac sprue and gluten intolerance?
Yeah, the nurse is usually, we, it's a big collaborative and we try to get it as close as the meal as we can. Um, but.
We have a couple at every school and they're really great at working with them. And then the high school, um, they can do like build your own deli. We have gluten-free rolls over there. They can go through the salad bar.
Yeah, yep. We, yeah, we do gluten-free every day at all the schools. So.
My daughter for lunch. I'll just attest, my daughter has celiac. She reads about gluten-free muffins. She was very excited to even have an option. So.
That's it.
Thank you so much. Great.
Thank you. Sam, we want samples.
Throw apples at us. I'll take an apple. We just forgot to thank him for the rhubarb.
Oh, I know the rhubarb. Oh my gosh, that was incredible. Tell him thank you for the rhubarb.
Tell him that rhubarb was fabulous.
My favorite thing.
Okay, and the last discussion item is the cave delicate assembly.
Yeah, as we did last year, I think we just kind of talked to myself to see who.
To see if anyone has anybody to, that they want to pull for discussion. They want to have any say on anything that's being voted on. It all seems solid. It's not, yeah. Usually we've spent a lot of time debating and talking about it before we even put it on the agenda. So I don't know if anybody. It's just basically, do you have anything that you would like us to pull, talk about, vote no for? Ask question, ask questions clarifying on, last year you had me pull teachers, something, I don't remember what, tenure or something.
Yeah, teacher tenure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we discussed that and it stayed.
If I do another look-through and have immediate questions or feedback, what's the absolute latest I can send it to you?
Well, it's Thursday at three.
This Thursday. So. Next Thursday, okay. So like if I end of day this Friday, I can, so.
Okay, any thoughts, comments? Okay, great. Thanks, Jamie. That closes our discussion action items for the uh, evening and we move on to administration reports and Jeff.
No, no real um, reports. We just uh, last week and shared most everything out. I will just quickly mention, um, we did hear back from Cave. That they did make an error. We did, we did receive a level two. So we're getting more information um, on that and I'll share that out. Um, it's not before Friday on Friday. That was it.
That's good.
Yeah.
You're in for a great day of P D tomorrow. So um, focus will be explicit instruction in the morning at all the buildings. And then um, some department-based work and as Ashley mentioned, some wellness um, offerings in the afternoon. We also have uh, Victoria Thompson presenting on fun for teachers for folks who are interested in learning more about that. So. Because it goes back to you hear what you want, right?
For teachers. I got really excited.
For teachers too. I just want to make a comment. I think that it's wonderful that you're making a fun for teachers and also incorporating along this piece because it is, I think, much needed.
Good question. Could we ever see, and maybe I'm overstepping my boundaries as a board member, could we ever just see the, the list of activities that y'all are gonna do? I'm just curious.
We update this Friday.
I, I usually, um, you know, do sort of like a summary with the pictures from the day. So I'll do that in the weekly update. Um, again, I'm gonna ask, are we ever allowed to, with permission, are we ever allowed to attend those or?
Yeah, Joe, we can, we can talk.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I, I'll be making my rounds tomorrow. So, you know. And go around and I remember doing the walking walks, which was very beneficial.
That's something, yeah, for years.
Always open to have a partner as I, you know, pop, pop along and some of it I'll be facilitating. Um, but you know, Um, for the morning, for the most part, the building-based leadership.
Um, for the morning, for the most part, the building-based leadership teams are running, um, their PD, so happy to have a ride along. Thursday, so.
We know where you're at.
You're an access. You don't wanna come to that? You wanna come help me with the budget?
Me too.
Tomorrow will be busy, but.
So that closes our administration reports, committee reports, um.
Everything that I said last week is the same this week.
Okay. And then we move, uh, to board comments and future agenda items. I, I'm gonna jump in quickly. And have kind of a proposal or thought for the middle school sports, um. What do people think? We have a future agenda item, Kevin. Um, give him a little, I don't know when he comes next, in the next couple of months or something and let him give a. We can have a discussion where he can give us his personal view in. Number four, so in a month. Where he comes and he gives his perspective on middle school, we can ask, have a interact, dialogue with him. And while people have others.
No, I, I think that it's fine.
And give him a little more time to. Get started. I feel like he's been here a long time, uh, he's done so much, but, um, okay, other.
Well, when did that happen? I mean, there was some leak or something that people all of a sudden had this. Idea that there's might be major cuts and then there's the ground swell and.
No, I, nothing about cuts. I think it was more along the lines of just trying to, uh, there's some. Parents as we, so tonight and then that was a family that is really just pushing for more in-house, in-town. We battle up against all of the upside from your leagues and everything else. And that was kind of what we ran into, uh, soccer in the past, but.
Yeah, worth the discussion. Cause we did talk when we put the middle school program in and I recall it was leave, but I could be said. Is there a next thing, like after?
Yes, and I think it makes sense, cause I think what we saw happen last time was, it was very like reactive, right? We don't have these programs. Now it's like last minute, we're kind of scrambling. I, my. Read on like the story in my head is, let's get ahead of this, have this conversation early before we start having budget workshops. So that it's on everyone's mind and we can be proactive about it. It's kind of my sense.
Yeah, just an additive to, there's some of the comments that were actually made, I think that were very poignant. So having the discussion, having the, you know, the opportunity to have dialogue is gonna be important, yep.
Right, so the timing's perfect within a four, four meeting.
Yeah, works really well.
It works actually perfectly.
Yes. Other, yeah, late.
I don't know if this is a future agenda topic for AAA or for, for full board, but, um, kind of as a continuation. From our like Sback data conversation and then, um, Kim's great presentation from last time. But I've been getting some really insightful details around special education at Eastline, um. Both in terms of like performance, kind of state of the union for lack of a better term, but I do think it could be good to have a, either in AAA or full board spotlight. On kind of trends, general, kind of, yeah. Also like some of the performance data and some of the, you know, the data that we were seeing. I think Emily, you were, you seen on some of those emails as well. I think it could be helpful for the full board to have a dialogue around that.
I would agree on that.
Yeah, yeah, one hundred.
Other comments? I have one other minor one, so. It was nice seeing Ashley and I know we have at the high school, I think we have a few recent grads who are now. Teachers or IAs or for something. Is there any way we can celebrate? Our graduates who come back and work or do something to, I don't know, it's, it's, it's neat to see them. Uh, kind of as they've grown up and gonna, I, it's not a well-thought-out idea. It's just when Ashley was here, it's like, wow, it's kind of neat. Cause I know, I've started to see names and their names I'm starting to recognize just because of my kids' age. So there's probably others that I just don't recognize their names, um. Uh, but I don't, I don't know what to do with it, but it, it would be interesting.
I think it would be a really nice way to incorporate some kind of a leadership opportunity, like a leadership lab or leadership mentors. And bringing some of our alums who are in the area to facilitate that and to, and pass the baton and build them up. And, and Alyssa, you and I have talked about that last summer or something, that'd be a fun thing to pilot. If there was enough time in the day, I know.
Right.
You know what? On top of that, to our caveat to that as well, um, Mariana and Lisa and I, uh, I can, we, we've recently talking about the number of people. That have come back to district after leaving us too. Um, so we did a, was it Mariana, three-year look back or five-year, three to five-year?
I did three of the people that left, came back and are still here.
Yes.
Don't remember what that was. There's farm, like the lift is far greater if they've left, come back and left again. Like, so we've had a few of those.
Yeah, that have moved on to other jobs, but turned around and came back. To us, which, which is a good.
There's quite a few, yeah.
What kind of positions do they leave and come back and?
It's all over. Most of them were IA positions, uh, special assistants, but, yeah, yeah, you're right, some teacher positions.
Really interesting with learn is that they really groom the IAs or paraprofessionals. And then sometimes they will actually become teachers and then leaders and then, uh, coaches, so it goes the whole continuum, so. That's a real success.
So why don't we talk and see if there's something around this that we can do with interchange back here? Okay, I think that's it.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Five seconds.
All in favor? In the adjourn, thanks everyone.